Good evening. I would like to call the Order of the Regular Meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster. Today's date is March 5th, I believe. That's correct. And at 6:00 PM. Secretary, if you could call. That'd be great.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadi?
Here.
Commissioner Rose?
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Here.
Chair Wolbert?
Here.
You have a quorum, Chair Wolbert.
Thank you much. We'd like to now salute the flag. Commissioner Hamadi, if you do the honors.
Please appear at the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You may be seated. Agenda item number three, Report from the Planning Secretary on Any Late Communication Items.
Yes, we have two late communication items. They've been placed on the dais and copies have been made available to the public as well.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, Ex parte Communications. Ex parte Communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings and regular business items. Do we have any disclosures tonight?
I do, Chair. I did, I drove by the proposed site for the warehouse and I did visit the proposed site of the used car rental and sales, or used car sales and rental.
The same here. I drove by and there's no address. I don't know why it's echoing like this. It's from the microphone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, it's clear now. The site's empty. The 7474 address is completely empty and the car lot also is empty.
Okay.
I did drive by the site and take a look to make sure that I know what I'm talking about today.
Fantastic. If that's it, we'll move on to agenda item number five. Any special presentations tonight? I don't think we do. Perfect. Item number six will be oral communications. And if, Clerk, could you read the procedure into record, please?
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at the time and state your name and city of residence for the record.
Thank you. Do we have any request to speak forms?
Not, for public hearing, yes.
For public hearing, but not for oral communications?
No.
And if that's the case, I'd like to go ahead and close the oral communications and we'll move on to item number seven, which is the approval of minutes from February 5th. Do we have any motions?
Yeah, I didn't have any minutes. Do we have minutes?
Minutes not included in the binder.
There were no minutes in the binder.
Yeah, I didn't see it either. Well, we can do it at the next meeting.
We will go ahead and table the minutes, item number seven, until next meeting when we can have both this meeting and the meeting before minutes. If that works. All right. We'll move on to agenda item number eight, that's public hearings. We've got a few tonight. And Clerk, if you could do us a favor one more time and read the procedure into record.
Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal. With exception of the applicant or designee, all attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions.
Thank you. All right. Do we have agenda item 8.1, which is case number 2024-0262, a conditional use permit? I'll go ahead and turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Chair Wolbert and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Stephanie Tomayeno, contract planner, presenting on behalf of the project planner, Ken Fichtelman, who is out of the office this week. So let's give it a moment to load up the presentation. Perfect. Okay, the applicant is Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company of Los Angeles and they are requesting a conditional use permit to sell used vehicles and to operate a vehicle rental facility within the C2 General Business zoning district. Used vehicle sales are permitted with a CUP. Vehicle rentals can be permitted with an administrative use permit. However, in this case, because both of the land uses utilize the same site, buildings and parking lots, they will be considered altogether as part of this conditional use permit application. Okay, so the site is comprised of three parcels totaling about 11 acres in area. The property has been used as a vehicle dealership since 1968 when it was first developed as a four-dealer ship. Most recently, the site was the home of Dennis Dillon RV Sales, which vacated the property in the first half of 2024. The site is surrounded by a mobile home park to the south and east, and to the north is a multi-story office complex. To the south is the 405 freeway. Vehicle access to the site is provided via two driveways, both located along Garden Grove Boulevard. The property was developed with three buildings, all two stories in height. Enterprise Rent-A-Car is planning to utilize all existing structures for its operations. The business is comprised of three main components. First, used car sales, which is depicted, shown in pink, so that would be the northwest corner of the site. So used car sales will be operated out of the main building and it will utilize that general portion of the parking lot. Second, commercial vehicle rental, which is shown in orange. So it's, it's a little bit hard to see, but it's the orange area of the parking lot that's split into two different segments, generally around the secondary building. This vehicle rental component will offer a range of light-duty trucks, including cargo vans and pickups. And third is the van pool rental, which is shown in blue. It's a very small component, right along the 405 freeway. This component of the business is intended for rideshare programs hosted by companies and local transportation agencies offering commuting services to employees. Now, the majority of the parking lot is depicted in blue, which, not blue, I'm sorry, green, and that's referred to as the hub. It's meant to be used as a vehicle storage area where vehicles can be stored and then moved around between various enterprise facilities based on demand. So it's kind of a flex space. Okay, so the project involves minor exterior and interior tenant improvements and the building footprint will not change. Therefore, the project does not impact the property's development standards. Parking requirements are met and in fact, the site provides approximately three times the number of parking stalls needed per the zoning code. The general plan land use designation for the site is regional commercial and the project is consistent with the general plan policies and goals for the region as the business is expected to draw customers from throughout the region. A condition of approval ensures that vehicle rentals are tied to the used car sales business and cannot operate independently. If the used car sales portion of the business ceases, the conditional use permit for vehicle rentals will no longer be valid. This prevents the site from transitioning into a standalone vehicle rental operation, which was not the intent of this approval. The project is categorically exempt from further secret review under Section 15301 for existing facilities. The project qualifies for this exemption because it involves operating a business within existing buildings and it involves negligible or no expansion of use. Public notification was provided of tonight's hearing and staff has not received any public comments related to this application. In conclusion, staff recommends adopting Resolution 25-003 approving the conditional use permit to allow used car sales and vehicle rentals. This concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for staff up here tonight?
I do.
Go ahead.
The project is mainly renting commercial cars? I didn't hear anything about regular vehicles, sedans.
Commissioner Hamadi, could you repeat that second part of the question?
The, the project stated that they only rent like commercial vehicles, nothing like for public sedans or SUVs for people. Is that what it is?
I believe that's correct. I would have to defer that question to the applicant. Unfortunately, since I wasn't the project planner, I don't have the particular details of the business operations.
Okay. Thank you.
Go right ahead. Yep.
Turn my mic on. Can you hear me?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I'm very familiar with this site. Are they going to be utilizing the existing electronic sign that is on there?
That's correct. Yes, they will be.
And will we be able to put any kind of restrictions on the sign or ask any updates or upgrades to that sign to be done because it is quite light, a lot of light pollution? You can see that sign during the day from about a mile away.
That is certainly within the Planning Commission's discretion as part of, as what's proposed right now within the plans. The applicant is proposing to reface the signs, but not really do any significant changes to any of the signage. So if that is the desire of the majority of the Planning Commission, they certainly, you certainly have the discretion to include conditions of approval within your, your action.
Okay, because I, my understanding from every, all the work that we did on the billboard ordinance was that there's newer, better technology that is not so light polluting. And so that's, that's one of my questions. And then is there any concern about additional noise for the residents to the east that are in the mobile home park? I know that this has always been a vehicle rental and/or sales location. It was Showcase Chevrolet, I bought my first truck there. It was Dennis Dillon RV. It would be great to have another tenant in there, but given kind of like what they're doing, are we anticipating more noise with this?
Yeah, so although I don't believe that specific topic was analyzed or was meant, was addressed within the staff report, generally staff wasn't too concerned about the potential noise impacts. There wasn't, in terms of reviewing this application, it does get reviewed by a number of different departments through our development review team. And there weren't any concerns raised by other departments of there being a history of noise complaints from the prior used car dealerships. And so usually if there is like an established history of complaints being filed, that's usually something that as we have new applications, we try to address through the application review process, possibly require any kinds of noise studies. But that wasn't a specific concern that was raised as part of our development review team review of the application. So there wasn't so much an in-depth analysis of noise because there isn't a kind of like a established history of there being noise complaints generated from the prior dealerships.
Thanks. Two more questions. Do we know how long they plan to be there? I'm assuming that they're going to be leasing the space? They're not purchasing the space?
Staff doesn't have that, that answer. I would defer that question to the applicant.
Okay, and then the final question, did they also look at the Carvana site? My understanding is Carvana has moved out of that site?
Unfortunately, I don't have any information to respond to that question.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Donna.
I'd like to know about the impact of this site plan to the residents around it and does it have a study of the traffic surrounding area?
Okay, so that's a good question as far as traffic impacts. I think in general, when it, when this CUP application was reviewed by multiple departments, so that includes planning, building, engineering, traffic engineering and so forth. Overall, the, the nature of the business, it kind of represents a de-intensification of the site in some ways, as you can see within the site plan. A large portion of the parking lot is, doesn't have, you know, intensive business operations. There's about half of the parking lot is really dedicated to this flex space for them to, to utilize it for their own internal business operations. So overall, when, when staff took a look at this specific proposal in comparison to prior, you know, dealerships that were utilizing the site, overall, it was, it was determined that it was somewhat of a reduction of overall impact and usage of the overall site. So there wasn't the, there, there wasn't a need to really require the applicant to prepare a more in-depth traffic analysis because there wasn't anything within the application that really showed that it was increasing, that between the prior use and the current use being considered, that there was a, you know, a significant increase in the number of vehicles that would be generated to the site, which would then trigger additional traffic analysis. Hopefully that answers your question.
One more question regarding the people around the area. The city informed the resident within 500 feet of this area so that they can know then and can bring up their concern to this project.
That's correct, yes. So for anything that is presented to the Planning Commission before a public hearing, all owners and occupants that live within 500 feet of the project boundaries, they are notified of tonight's public hearing. And it was a fairly lengthy list of, of addresses that were, that received a mailer of the, the public hearing notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for us now? All right. We'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Okay. Paul McGlynn, speaking in favor. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Vice Chair Anderson, Chairman Wolbert. My name is Paul McGlynn. I live in Huntington Beach and I work for Enterprise Rent-A-Car. You know, a lot of people know us as a car rental company, but what people don't understand is Enterprise, we are a privately owned, family-run business and we've been that way since we started in 1957. As mobility solutions have evolved, so has our company. Besides operating Enterprise Rent-A-Car, we also own and operate Alamo and National Car Rental, Enterprise Car Sales, Enterprise Truck Rental, Commute by Enterprise, which is a van pooling company, Enterprise Car Share, and a technology company that provides software solutions for the mobility industry. Now, as we have grown in size, we've never really lost our family business roots and that is proven with our philanthropic arm, the Enterprise Foundation, which last year alone donated over $84 million to nonprofits here in North America and 95% of those donations were done on behalf of our employees. As we look at Southern California, we operate 300 sites in Southern California and we employ over 4,000 people. And within the city of Westminster, we've been doing business on Beach Boulevard for the past 30 years. We're very excited about 5400 Garden Grove Boulevard because it gives us the opportunity to build our first mobility hub in all of Orange County. This will be a site where customers can come, whether it's to purchase a used vehicle, could be a passenger vehicle, it's not just commercial vehicles. They could rent a vehicle and they can also learn about other mobility solutions such as van pooling. As we heard in the, the earlier report, our use fits into the general plan of the city and the improvements we're looking to do has nothing major to do. It's mostly branding the building for, for enterprise use. We are honored to have the support of the city and look forward to earning the support of the commission here tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We actually can take the, the remaining of your 12 minutes, there's just about nine left. If you wouldn't mind, we can ask you some questions now?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Alan, I think you had one. Go ahead.
What I was, what I'm saying is that I know in the car sales, you can sell everything, all kinds of cars. I know that. What I'm saying is that, what I, my question was, is are you going to rent to people like SUVs and rental cars, like four-door sedans or not?
We currently do that, we currently do that right now in the city of the Westminster on Beach Boulevard.
I know the place.
We have two sites. We have the one in, next to Elmore Toyota. We have another one down by Honda World. To start this site off, our primary focus is vehicle sales. We are starting with truck rental as well, so cargo vans up through box trucks. But as we learn more about the demand for that part of Westminster, yes, there is the opportunity for us to add another car rental location if the city will support it.
That's what I want to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
I had a question. I noticed that the letterhead actually sent over to the city planner was from Enterprise Mobility.
Correct.
So it sounds like that's going to be a, because of the space and the size of the site, that's going to be a focus for you guys in that particular location?
It is. So Mobility, that is the parent company that owns and operates the, the different entities. But from branding elements, everything will be reading Enterprise, Enterprise Truck Rental, Enterprise Car Sales, Commute by Enterprise, et cetera.
Okay.
I've got a question. Yeah, I had a chance to visit the site today and, and over the years, I've noticed that at one time was Sunset Ford and started in 1968 and, and that building, the showroom is what seems to be left of Sunset Ford. And then there was Showcase Chevrolet originally and that seems to be intact, totally intact. Sunset Ford is years old and Showcase is newer, but the building's retired. And so I'm a little bit concerned when you say, well, you're just going to do a little branding. Are you going to do something to really make this something that the city and Enterprise can be proud of? The total overall look of the facility, the landscaping and the exterior of the buildings?
Absolutely. You know, we submitted some renderings to the planning department when we submitted our conditional use permit. It's, when I say branding elements, you know, we, with Enterprise, it's, it's everything, not just from the exterior, but the inside, you know, what type of tile we're using down on the floors and everything. For us, we want the, not only the city to be proud of this, but we want our customers to be proud of it. Most importantly, we want our employees to be proud of it. We want this to be a place where they enjoy coming to work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you expand a little bit on your tenant improvements that you have planned?
Sure. There's nothing majorly structural in place. As Vice Chair Anderson pointed out, you know, the building Showcase Chevrolet, it's, it's quite modern. So with the interior, it's, it's mostly removing the old flooring and doing some new tile work, refreshing the office space and, and making room for car sales consultants to come in and be able to work out of there.
Will the exterior be painted or?
Absolutely, yeah. The, the exterior does need a little bit of love. We need some, some paint on there as well. Everything that we plan to do will go through the planning department here at the city, so they'll have time to weigh in and, and offer suggestions for improvement.
Will the color be white and green?
It's a moderate white. It's an off-white that we use. The only green that you'll see is typically in the, in the signage with the fascia bands and the signs itself.
What percentage of the space do you think is going to be used just for strictly car storage? It sounded like staff indicated it's going to be a regional hub for storing so you can get other available cars that are for sale out to the other locations.
Correct. So, you know, the, the customer-facing portions up front will be everything that's handled for both vehicle rental and vehicle sales and the, the van pooling operations. The back half, that was notated in green. That's going to kind of be our flex space. Really, a lot of that with the flex space is going to depend on the demand that this draws. You know, the beauty that, that we love about this mobility hub where it's located, it's not just the city of Westminster that it's serving, but it's the surrounding communities, whether it be Huntington Beach, Stanton, Buena Park, Garden Grove, Seal Beach, you know, Long Beach and beyond. You know, as the demand grows and, and people become aware of our presence, we have the space to grow with it.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yes.
Is it okay if I ask the same questions to you that I asked the project planner? Okay, so starting at the top with the electronic sign, do, are you open to any requests to adjust the sign for light pollution especially?
Well, and Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we have limited hours that we're allowed to operate that sign. I believe it shuts down at 10:00 PM. That was some of the initial feedback that we received from the city and we're open to, we're working within those hours. We understand that there's residents that live in the area and we can work with the city on that.
Okay. Did you look at any other sites in the city or were you really focused on this one?
Well, we're really focused on this site. We've been looking at this site since we knew that the current tenants were getting ready to move out. So that's where we've been in negotiations. I know, I believe you had mentioned the, the Carvana site on the other side of the freeway. We didn't take a look at that because at the time it wasn't available. Just from my limited knowledge, I don't think it's big enough to, to meet what we're trying to do and managing a giant vending machine really isn't something that we're experts at.
Okay, that's fair. And how long is your lease? And how long is your lease then, that you're going to be entering into?
Well, we're still in negotiations with the landlord. A traditional lease for us is anywhere between 10 to 20 years, but what I can tell you is from our experience in the city of Westminster right now, the location, we've been in a Beach Boulevard, we've been there for 30 years, and everything we do is with long-term in mind.
And then the last question, just if you could expand a little bit more on the mobility side and the Enterprise commuter, and how does that operate and what is that, how is that going to bring, like, what kind of element is that going to bring into that particular area? Are there going to be pedestrians walking in to then get on commuter share rides? Like, how, can you give us some explanation?
So the way that van pooling works is, we take a look at where people live and where they work, and we pair them up with, like, individuals with similar commutes. The van pools typically take place at parking rides that you see along the freeway. This is a place for our van pool team to domicile and work out of. It's a place for the vans to come back as they need service. If a customer needs to, excuse me, switch out of their van pool vehicle into another van pool vehicle, they'll be able to come there, but there's really no pedestrian traffic as far as coming on the lot.
So commuters are not going to be coming there, parking their vehicles and are walking or bike-riding in and then getting on the van pool?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The reason you didn't add the car rentals, is it because the city didn't allow it, or you either want to do it now and you want to come back and do it? The way I'm thinking right now in my head, why can't you do it one package completely, everything? Have it on your, in your package so you don't have to come back?
Sure. Our primary points of business within the city of Westminster when it comes to car rental is we provide loaner car service to the local body shops and the car dealerships in the area. So right now, most of our clientele are along Beach Boulevard with your major dealerships and the body shops that are sprinkled in that area. But again, as we open up shop and people come to know who we are, and, you know, if we see that demand, the local residents in the trailer park and the folks on the other side of the 405 freeway asking for car rental, we listen to our customers' demands and we're here to meet those demands.
Okay. Well, in my opinion, you should have it on, in the package one time, in case you want to do it, you don't have to do anything else.
There we go.
It's done.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just, yeah, just a question here. Commissioner Rose mentioned about the lighting, the concern about the, concern about the lighting and the older technology is very invasive into the surrounding area. So is Enterprise interested in doing something with the signage even though there'll be limited hours? Is that correct, Stephanie? There'll be limited hours on the sign usage? Mr. McGlynn, I think stated, you think it goes off at 10 o'clock at night?
Yes, sir. As I read through the other conditional use permits in the past, there were time limitations put on the billboard. And to answer your question, we're willing to take a look at it. We haven't been able to do a deep dive into the property as there's been another tenant on site, so we haven't really had the opportunity to look at that technology. That is something we're looking to do as we, you know, get past the conditional use permit hurdle. It's something we're definitely interested in, we'll take a look at.
Just a comment on that. I don't know that, even if it is limited to 10:00 PM, I don't know that the sign is turning off at 10:00 PM, and it is extremely bright, so at 10:00 in the morning, you can be a mile away and see the sign. So I have personally seen it. And that's across the freeway.
So to answer your question, I just reviewed the resolution. I did not see a proposed condition of approval that requires the signage on-site to be a, to be termed off at any given time. It sounds like the applicant is willing to have a condition to that effect. I'm seeing a yes, so that, we can hear from the public.
Sure.
We can go from there at this point.
Yeah, we're here to enhance the city, we're not here to take away from it, so, you know, whatever we need to do to meet those needs, we'll partner with the city on it.
Yeah. Signage is something that we just spent a lot of time on, and so we learned a lot about the new technology, and we know that's an old technology sign, and so, and it's doing a lot of noise, or not noise pollution, light pollution.
Light pollution. Great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speaker cards for this? That's the only one. All right. Unless somebody wants to recall up, there's no rebuttal that's going to happen. Do we need to talk to the applicant more, or can I close public hearing? Are we good? Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on agenda item 8.1. Now's the time that we can discuss this, bring up any points, ask staff any other extra questions that you have. I will point out that I did notice that in part of the resolution, item, point number five, I believe it is, under E, there is no outdoor business operations shall be permitted between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. That could be something that you could consider as part of the sign being a part of the normal business operations, and that could be also included in that, item number five. If you're looking at time constraints, that just would be my observation there. We also could, as part of a conditional use permit, you know, make some adjustments to that particular sign, but just pointing that out. Any other comments, questions, any points?
No.
The only comment that I would have, I'm on, right?
Yes.
You can hear me? Okay, good. Sorry, it's all the green light, on, off, not sure. The only comment that I would have would be looking at the general plan and a question, I guess, back to Stephanie. That area is, it's zoned mixed use at this point? Is that correct in the general plan?
It's.
It's commercial.
It's actually commercial. Is it, is it commercial?
Yes, it's commercial.
Okay, okay. Because I think that when the general plan was done, it was, we were looking at that whole area, and there was the potential for like, oh, could that large site be redeveloped into retail, you know, something that more of the residents could come to? Because it is a large site, and if we approve this, then we're talking about the next 10 to 20 years, it will continue as a auto place, which I don't think is wrong, but, you know, it just will. So that's just a comment I would have for the rest of the commissioners, for us to consider.
I think it's a good project, we need the business. That's what I think.
Yeah, yep, I agree. Yeah, I think it's a great use of the site.
It is, absolutely. We cannot leave it empty like that.
And we have a large company that wants to come in and do business in our city and provide a service to the community and beyond, so I think it'll benefit everybody.
I'm going to move approval, I'm not sure you guys want to put any condition on it, it's up to you.
Yeah, well, second, but I will suggest a condition, and that is to, we address the signage, because it is antiquated technology for the big display signs, and it does put out a lot of light, which does affect our residents, so if we can make this a better situation for our residents and still work within the realm of what Enterprise needs to accomplish, that's what we want to do. So I think I would like to suggest a condition that would limit the operation of the sign the same hours of the outdoor operation. I think Chair Walmer brought that up. And then I would also like to include in that condition that give the applicant an opportunity, a year to investigate, study, research new technology for that sign, and then come back to staff with their findings, and then, depending on what they come up with, come back to the planning commission if that's necessary, or if it could be handled administratively, that would be okay too.
Would you mind if I ask the applicant what would he?
So, so that I'm clear, so that they would return to staff with what, proposed revisions to the sign?
Yes, yeah, to see, well.
If you, if you just say, like, if there's a new billboard ordinance that's put forward and they want to make changes to the sign, then they would have to comply with the new billboard ordinance or any future billboard ordinance, but in the meantime, because it's an older technology type of sign, it can fall within the business operation limit timeframe. And if they want to operate outside that timeframe, they could come back and apply, but it would be underneath a new billboard ordinance.
Well, no, I think we, what I'm suggesting is that we would, at this point, or that give the applicant a year, basically, and work with just have limited hours, and then maybe to make it, and address the city attorney's question, what are we looking for here? I would say come back within a year with a proposal to upgrade the sign to the new technology that would be within our, that would not be so obtrusive to the surrounding residential uses. But give the applicant a year to put the pieces together and come back and tell the city what they're going to do, but make that a requirement that they upgrade the sign.
Okay, so, potential language along those lines would be to indicate, within one year of the date of approval, all existing onsite signage shall either be updated to comply with Chapter 17.33, 330, or be removed.
Yep, that sounds great.
Okay, in your motion, are you, I mean, in your condition?
I have a concern.
Hold on one second.
Oh, you're not finished, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no, that's fine. So that would be one condition, but, and then the proposed language that we'd have would be to add condition number 11 to say, no onsite signage shall be illuminated between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Is that the condition you want?
During, during that year period.
Oh, but after that, that you would not have any limitation?
Yes.
The way that I drafted it is, you can never have it on at night, but, so it'd just be during that one-year period?
Okay, well, maybe read what your, your first, go through your first iteration there.
So the first iteration would say, all existing onsite signage shall either be updated, well, be, sorry, within one year of the date of approval, all existing onsite signage shall either be updated to comply with Chapter 17.330 or shall be removed.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, can we ask the applicant?
Can you, can you clarify what, I'm sorry, sorry.
Hold on one second. So we have, we have that down as far as Dawn's conditions. I had one question for staff, though. That is only a freeway-facing illuminated sign, correct? It's a one-sided sign? It does not illuminate back towards the Mobile Home Parks to the north?
It illuminates directly into, across the freeway.
Across the freeway.
Into a residential track across the freeway.
Right.
That is clearly seen across the freeway. So it's pointed that direction. And I've never walked in the Mobile Home Park to see if it points that direction, but I would imagine you could probably see it from there as well.
And Scott, I think so. During that year period, that they either upgrade to conform to the current code or remove, but during that year, then, the existing signage would then operate within that 9, 9:00 PM to, would not operate between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
We can do it however you want, but that's what you're saying you want?
Yes, so.
Okay.
Take what you said.
So once they have an updated code, then you would remove the requirement that they turn it off at night? Because they're in compliance with our code?
Yes, yeah, if that's.
Just to clarify, isn't the code for billboards, and then when we were talking about the billboard ordinance that still hasn't been passed yet, that the, that was, it was separate from onsite signage for businesses? So if we're quote, if we're referencing a billboard ordinance that has not been passed yet, and it was exempt, onsite signage was exempt, then this, this isn't going to address what we need it to address. I just want to clarify. So the, you referenced a code, would you mind reading to us what that is?
I apologize, I'm not familiar with all the nuances, I'm kind of jumping into the last minute here, so I apologize, thank you for that. I was unaware that that was not part of our existing code, so the billboard ordinance is still in place, it sounds like, or still being updated, has not yet been updated.
It has not been passed by council, that is correct. It was brought to council and they have deferred it.
I see.
Just a quick question for the applicant, won't take that long.
Okay. Go ahead.
Quick question.
Alan has a question for you, if you wouldn't mind, just a sec.
Well, the hours that they're putting on the condition, will that work for you? Or you want, or you want different hours?
No, absolutely. I, I, look, like.
We don't want to affect your business, simple as that.
No, 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 it won't. You know, our hours, I believe the car sale dealership will close down at 8:00. I mean, if we need to close down the electronic billboards at 10:00 PM for the sake of the residents on the other side, I can sympathize with what they're dealing with, I think that's something we could support. You know, as far as upgrading the technology, it's something we'll take a look at, but, you know, there's a lot that goes into that. I don't know how old that billboard is, what's the useful life of the billboard, what does new technology cost? There's a lot that is going to go into that decision, which we will do the legwork, we'll happily partner with planning to come up with a solution, but I think if it's shutting off at night, I think that probably solves most of the problems.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for answering.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I mean, for me, if they're willing to stay within the business operating hours of 9:00 to 6:00, you know, shut that sign off at 9:00 PM and start it up again at 6:00 AM, I don't necessarily, for me, if, I mean, I know these signs can cost a lot of money, and so it might be cost prohibitive to upgrade the sign or force them to upgrade the sign in a year.
And they're just starting in the business, you can't just put that much pressure on them.
Well, I just don't, I don't.
And also, when I proposed this, I was, I had believed that there were already signed regulations in place, and we were just telling them that they had to update it to be consistent with what we have right now, as opposed to trying to get to grandfather in an existing non-conforming use, and we're making it clear. So it's harder to force somebody to comply with a code that doesn't yet exist.
And Stephanie, you can clarify, that does not currently exist, right? A code about noise?
That's correct. There's no lighting standards.
Correct. There's no light standards on digital signage in the city of Westminster currently.
Nope.
And can you answer the question? I don't know if you know this, but did the current Dylan RV have to obtain an operational permit for that sign, separate from a conditional use permit?
There is, I'm aware, unfortunately, I don't have the specific details of it, but I believe there was some sort of agreement between the city and the vehicle operator, some kind of development agreement or a similar type of agreement that puts restrictions in place regarding the operation of that sign. So very different from, or similar to conditions of approval, but embedded within the agreement itself. And unfortunately, I can't find a copy of that to be able to answer the question about the time limitation.
Right. So we can't say if we're keeping the rules fair for the current tenant, for the new tenant, we're not exactly sure what that agreement was and what the timeframe was, if there was any limits of, limits of, or conditions of approval?
That's correct. I don't have that specific information regarding the operational hours of the sign in front of me. So, where do we go?
Tony, go ahead. Yes. Would like to have a question to the staff or to the condition here.
Sure.
Regarding the environmental protection, by looking at the plan, you can see that this, there is a big parking lot, that means a lot of car will be parking there, and hence there will be oil dripping on the parking lot, and according to the EPA, they all have a draining from water to the storm drain, has to be filtering a baton from oil before it dump to the, to the ocean. So I recommend that they have a way to have a station to accumulate the water from parking lot, and then it will be filtering all the oil for the, before the water dump to the ocean. Please put that into consideration.
I don't know if any car dealership that's just selling cars versus car, like.
Mechanic shop.
Mechanic shop would have one thing, but they're not, they're not actually fixing cars.
Different.
They won't even, and part of their conditional use permit also, it already states that they won't have any idle vehicles. In other words, you're not even allowed to just turn the car on and run it while it's sitting there on the property. I don't know if that's, that's a huge concern for us with oil.
It is not. It is not.
I mean, they're not, they're not going to be working on any cars or changing oil or anything like that.
They're not going to be doing mechanical work at all.
Right.
Aren't there existing mitigation for environmental impacts? The fact that it has been a, an auto lot for a long time?
Since 1968, I think.
I would imagine that that is already built into the lot, correct?
So typically, our public works department, they have, they implement the city's storm-water prevention program, and typically, there's certain categories of uses and certain thresholds that they use in terms of determining whether or not something, a specific land use or development or, you know, overall project proposal, whether or not it's considered a priority project. I was trying to find out whether or not you had to prepare a WQMP, I don't believe you did for it, but typically then what would happen is, once permits are submitted to the city, our development engineering team would take a look at it, take a look and see whether or not it meets those specific threshold of triggering any kind of water quality management plan. Because no development is proposed as part of the CUP, and we're simply looking at the use itself, it's probably not something that raised that specific question to our public work staff, but typically what happened Works staff, but typically, what happens is that they look at it, they see whether or not it meets certain thresholds, so it's based off of the square footage of impervious surface, so how much grading they're doing onsite, and then there are specific land uses, including auto repair shops, for example, certain types of land uses that have a higher potential for creating like hazardous waste and materials and things of that nature. And if it is, if it meets, if it's on that list of priority projects, then at that point, the applicant would have to prepare a water quality management plan, demonstrating what kinds of, you know, measures they're using to be able to prevent, prevent storm water runoff. Usually, that's done, they, our development engineering staff, they require a conceptual water quality management plan during the entitlement phase, usually when there's a development proposed, and then they also require a more project-specific water quality management plan to be submitted with building permits. So, at that point, they would catch it, take a look, and if, if they do in fact determine that it meets those thresholds, they would require the applicant to prepare a water quality management plan, which is quite thick, and there are, we usually go through multiple rounds of review and iterations before, you know, they're able to demonstrate that it meets all of their technical engineering standards.
Would you, Dawn, just a question for you, on, on these hours, I mean, 9:00 to 6:00 sounds like it's pretty reasonable if they're willing to operate the billboard within that time?
Yes, yeah, I think so, so, I guess to avoid the question, or to address the question at this point, because the new code hasn't been adopted, and we have an existing code, and it may or may not address the issues we're concerned with, so just go with the hours of operation, or non-operation would be 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Do you want to put any kind of provision in there that says if you want to operate outside those hours, you would have to comply with any new ordinances, and do a study from the residents, or any kind of other conditions you want to...
They would already have to comply with what those requirements are, that's, they have to comply with municipal code regardless. If we knew what the, if, if, if we have certain standards, we can impose conditions now, even though we don't have an ordinance already established, if we wanted to set standards for, if there's a way, and I don't have an answer to this, but you could say, any signage shall not exceed X amount of lumens, or, you know, some threshold, so even though we don't have this ordinance yet, if we project what that ordinance will be, then maybe it would be consistent. The problem with that, of course, is you might end up with an ordinance that has one thing, and now our condition is different. So, it's a judgment call.
And I think that, you know, part of the concern is that that was regarding freeway-facing digital billboards, and it wasn't addressing onsite signage, and so, we would just need to make sure that our language, if we are going to take from that, where we were really focused on light pollution, and how many lumens it's projecting out, and all of those different things, that we would need that information in order to put that, and then there would need to be an update to the overall code that would address onsite digital signage for businesses, which I don't know that that is something that the city is looking at right now. So, I am satisfied, if enterprise is satisfied with being a good neighbor, with limiting the usage, given the fact that even at 9:00 PM, with the exception of during the summer months where, you know, it doesn't get dark until 9:00 PM, in the winter time, when it gets dark at 4:30 or 5:00, I guarantee that this sign is shining into people's dining rooms. And so, it doesn't like totally address the issue. I would like to see some type of language written, that if changes are made, or whatever, that it needs to comply, but I think that it would have to comply anyways if you guys wanted to redo the sign. So, I think that this does help that site become a better neighbor for all of the neighbors around, and would enhance the site, because, you know, just another car lot isn't really enhancing the area for the residents of the west side. It's not someplace that they're going to always go to, I mean, once in a while when they buy a car.
I think one year is too short. As you start in the business, you can do some remodeling, bringing the business in, it can take time. One year is too short, I think we should give him at least two years.
I think we were taking that out altogether.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah, I, I think that we removed that once we, once we, once, once the city attorney, you know, realized that we were talking about having them comply with, with a code that doesn't exist.
Okay, that's fine.
Am I right? Dawn?
Well, yeah, the, the code that's been under consideration, the Planning Commission reviewed several months ago, that has a lot of detail, more detail than what's in the code now, so probably the best approach would just be to deal with the hours that the sign would be able to operate.
Chair Walbert, if I may, I took a stab, just listening to all the commissioners' feedback, from what I'm understanding, it seems that the overall desire is for the commission to limit the hours of illumination of the sign, but that in the event in the future, if the sign were to be retrofitted with new technology that would limit, you know, those, those, the current lighting impacts and spillover effects, then those restrictions would be lifted. So, I took a stab at drafting a condition of approval if the commission would like to consider it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, the condition would read, "The electronic display sign shall not be illuminated between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This restriction may be lifted if the sign is retrofitted with modern lighting technology that ins, that ensures that illumination is directed specifically towards freeway motorists and does not adversely affect nearby residential areas. Should such retrofitting occur, documentation confirming compliance with these conditions must be submitted to and approved by the city prior to extending the sign's hours of operation."
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's great.
Can you...
Yeah, thank you.
Would that go to the, to the Planning Commission, then? At that time? Or just to the city?
It, it's up to the discretion of commission, so if the commission would like to defer that determination to be made by staff, that's how it is currently, or, right now, it says approved by the city, so you would just specify if it's, if it's something that needs to be approved by Planning Commission or city staff.
I think staff should be good.
And I would disagree with that, I would like to go back to the Planning Commission, just so that the public is aware of what is happening, and it's not just something that is either approved or not approved.
The billboard itself requires a conditional use permit, correct?
So, this sign would not be considered a billboard because there's no onsite advertising, so it would not be subject to a CUP.
So, any business that wants to erect a digital sign on their property can? I don't think that's correct.
Under the proposed billboard ordinance, we did clarify that aspect of it, because it's actually a bit ambiguous within the sign code right now. So, we are recommending that any electronic digital display signs in the future require a CUP, but under the current provisions in the code, it's quite ambiguous, and it generally does not require Planning Commission of Approval. So, again, it's one of those areas that we're hoping to clean up, we do, staff is recommending it require a CUP for onsite advertising signs, if it utilizes any kind of electronic or digital display.
Okay.
I specifically remember that being something that we discussed, and that we found out that it wasn't, like, we talked about the Westminster Mall, and we talked about this sign during the billboard discussion.
Okay, so, Stephanie, so we could add a condition in there that it either be reviewed, or that staff would deal with it, or it could come back to the commission, in what form? A public hearing, conditional use permit?
I think, again, that's to the, at the discretion of the Planning Commission, what we would recommend, because it, there is a CUP, and I, I don't think it necessarily needs another public hearing, so we could schedule it as some kind of business item, or some other item, segment of the agenda, that doesn't trigger a public hearing, because, you know, the CUP, that, it's, it's not really a, we're not looking to revoke the CUP, or really modify that, it would really be just to evaluate this specific piece as it relates to the sign, so not coming back and opening up the CUP.
Right, okay, yeah, that, okay, yeah, I think that sounds reasonable, that it would come back to the commission, but just as a, as a non-public hearing item for commission review and approval, or review consideration?
Yes, that, if that is the commission's desire.
I would say yes for that.
Yeah, I think we can include that in the language, so, so upon, if anything needs to change with the sign, or the sign needs to be updated in the future to operate outside of those business hours, or those prohibited hours, then the applicant can bring those changes back to staff, and staff would just then refer them as a review item to the commission, saying, hey, by the way, this conditional use permit, the sign's being updated, here's some of the specifications, just as a knowledge, like, non-public hearing item, is that possible?
Yes, certainly, so...
What, one way to do this might be to authorize the director to do it, and require the director to notify the Planning Commission, and that, I presume that the people in the public have the right to appeal decisions of the planning director, and if, and then just simply, we've notified the Planning Commission, so now the public at least is somewhat aware that you guys are aware of it, and there is a means to appeal to you all if, if you want to do that. Maybe that's the medium, I'm not sure.
I, I guess my, my, I'm, I'm, we're getting kind of lost in this, and, and clarify for me, what exact, I, I just want that if the, if the, if the applicant decides to upgrade the sign, and we have language, that, the language that you just wrote and said for us sounded great, freeway-facing, non-light producing, all of the different things, that if they're going to do that, and they're going to operate the sign outside of the normal business hours, and residents see the sign is now on, that like, hey, they know, you know, we addressed the light pollution, it's, you're not supposed to be able to see it a mile away, as you can right now. So, that, so can you maybe read back what you had written? And, and the only thing that I was asking for was that, instead of it just being a stamp, staff approval, that the Planning Commission is made aware, and is allowed to either agree or disagree at that time, when that may happen in the future, unknown date at this point, because we know that these signs are expensive, so we're not mandating that it happen right now, we're addressing light pollution with hours of operation.
I think that's what you had, can you read it one more time?
Sure, of course. Okay, so, the condition reads, "The electronic display sign shall not be illuminated between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This restriction may be lifted if the sign is retrofitted with modern lighting technology that ensures that illumination is directed specifically towards freeway motorists and does not adversely affect nearby residential areas. Should such retrofitting occur, documentation confirming compliance with this condition must be submitted to and approved by the, the Planning Commission, or staff, depending on how the commission is leaning. So, documentation confirming compliance with these conditions must be submitted to and approved by the Planning Commission prior to extending the sign's hours of operation."
I like it. I'd like to actually, Alan, would you like to make a motion to approve with that?
I do.
Yes, yeah, the second approves.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hamadeh, seconded by Vice Chair Anderson, to approve conditional use permit 2024-0262, or request to operate a used vehicle sales and vehicle rental facility at 5400 Garden Grove Boulevard, within the general business C-2 zone through the adoption of Resolution 25-003, subject to the conditions of approval. I will call roll. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadeh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Walbert?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Congratulations, sir.
The commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after the decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day period.
Excellent, we will move on to agenda item 8.2, case number 2024-0277, development rule and administrative adjustment.
Give me just, give me just one moment to grab my other notes. Okay, so we have our presentation ready, okay. Good evening again. Okay, the project site is approximately 3.3 acres in area, and it's located in the commercial industrial zoning district. This is a hybrid zone, which allows a mixture of commercial and light industrial uses. For example, this, this zone permits both the development of commercial shopping centers, as well as light industrial buildings. All zoning aside, this area is predominantly an industrial area. The site is surrounded by industrial and storage uses, such as U-Haul and public storage. It backs up to the Garden Grove Freeway, and it's located right at the city limit along the Westminster and Garden Grove city border. The existing site contains multiple structures that were constructed primarily in the 1960s. There are about eight existing buildings onsite, totaling 5,200 square feet. It was previously occupied by a heat treatment and aerospace parts manufacturing facility, which is known as body coat thermal processing. The project involves demolishing those structures and redeveloping the site completely. The applicant, Seventh Street Development, is requesting two applications. First, a development review to construct a modern industrial warehouse facility, approximately 60,000, 69,000 square feet in area. They are also requesting an administrative adjustment to allow a building height increase of up to 10% above the 35-foot height limit of the zone. This building is speculative, meaning that no specific tenant has been identified at this time. However, the building is designed to accommodate a range of potential industrial uses, such as warehouse and distribution, light industrial, or research and development. One thing staff wanted to note is that development review applications are typically reviewed administratively and are subject to approval by the community development director. However, the zoning code does give the, does give the director the discretion to defer applications to the Planning Commission for action. And during the pre-application phase, the director determined that, given the size and scale of the proposed development, the project should be elevated to the Planning Commission for review and not approved administratively. The project involves the construction of a new single-tenant industrial warehouse building, approximately 69,000 square feet. The proposed building dedicates about 10% of the floor area to office space, and it has 10 truck-loading docks. The project meets all industrial development standards, except for building height, which will be addressed in a later slide. The site is designed and parked for a warehouse and distribution use. The zoning code requires 69 parking spaces, and the site plan provides 70 spaces. Because the future tenant is not known at this time, staff is recommending inclusion of a condition of approval, requiring any future land use to be consistent with the warehouse and distribution parking ratio for which the building was designed. Okay, so here is our landscape plan, and the proposed site includes a secured fenced yard area along the rear of the property, so it's shown right here, a little hard to see in yellow, backing up to the, the freeway. The development complies with all city landscaping requirements, and the project exceeds the 15% minimum requirement for site landscaping. The site plan includes a six-foot wide landscape strip along Garden Grove Boulevard to enhance the streetscape and screen the parking lot at the front. The plant also includes 45 trees and new ground cover and shrubs. The applicant is requesting an administrative adjustment to exceed the 35-foot height limit for industrial zones. The highest point of the building reaches 37 feet and 9 inches, which is within the 10, 10% adjustment allowance allowed by the code. This height increases is needed to achieve the industry standard of 32-feet interior warehouse clearance and provide proper roof drainage. Staff has reviewed the request for an administrative adjustment and determined it meets the required findings, so we recommend approval. Again, very hard to see within this cross-section, but generally, what you're looking for is that you'll see that there are portions of the, the roof where it slightly exceeds the 35-foot limit, and there, there's other parts of the building that are actually below the 35-foot limit. So, at the front, for example, closest to, on the second building section at the bottom, really hard to read, but it actually says it's right at 35 feet, so that's kind of just the nature of how the building roof is, and how it slopes to allow for drainage. Okay, so the project meets the city's industrial design guidelines with high-quality materials, varied colors, and architectural articulation, that's a tongue twister, so articulation to create a modern visually appealing building. Design features such... to create a modern, visually appealing building. Design features such as building offsets, parapet variations, and window placements help break up mass and add depth to the overall building design. Because the site is highly visible from the freeway, staff is recommending a condition of approval prohibiting unscreened storage to maintain a clean and orderly rear The applicant's traffic consultant prepared a traffic study to analyze various potential tenant scenarios. The study confirmed that the project's trip generation will remain below city thresholds, meaning that no additional traffic studies are required. To ensure that future traffic impacts stay consistent with this analysis, staff is recommending a condition of approval, requiring that a traffic review be prepared before any future tenant improvements. This will help verify that traffic volumes in the future, once a tenant is identified, do align with assumptions in the current study to prevent any unexpected impacts on Staff completed an environmental assessment and determined the project is categorically exempt from CEQA as it qualifies for a Class 32 exemption for infill development projects. The applicant's consultant prepared a technical analysis evaluating various environmental impacts. This included an air quality analysis, which confirmed that both construction and operational emissions would remain below thresholds set by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. Overall, the analysis concluded the project is categorically exempt from further CEQA review. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, public hearing notices were mailed to property owners and occupants within a 500-foot radius of the site. Notices were also posted at the project site, on the city's website, and on public bulletin boards. Staff received two written public comments, and, as noted in the late communication segment of the agenda, those copies of those two comment letters were provided to the planning commission. In response to the comment letter that's dated March 4, 2025, staff reviewed the concerns specifically raised in that comments letter and consulted with an outside CEQA consultant and the city attorney's office. Staff continues to recommend that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under the Class 32 exemption for infill development projects. The concerns raised in the letter do not invalidate the findings of the CEQA analysis. So, really briefly, I'll just summarize the key points that we found in assessing that comments letter. First, the letter states that the project is inconsistent with zoning because it exceeds the height limit of the zone. However, the municipal code does allow for administrative adjustments for height increases. So, the applicant is exercising their right to apply for this, which does not mean that the project is inconsistent with the zoning code. Second, the letter states that staff recommended conditions of approval are mitigation measures under CEQA, but conditions are not the same as mitigation measures. Cities can impose conditions at their discretion while mitigation measures are required to reduce significant environmental impacts, which is not the case here. And finally, the letter incorrectly states that the CEQA analysis admits the site is on the Cortez list, when in fact, the analysis does not make this claim. The site does not appear on the Cortez list, and there is no evidence of environmental contamination requiring further or triggering additional review. So, for these reasons, staff does stand by our CEQA recommendation. So, in conclusion, the project complies with all applicable zoning and municipal code development standards. The requested administrative adjustment meets the required findings for approval, and the proposed building complies with all industrial design guidelines. The project represents a significant investment to an existing industrial property, and it supports the city's goals related to economic development and community design. Therefore, staff recommends the planning commission adopt Resolution Number 2025-002, approving the project. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Well done. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. Any questions from any of the commission?
I have a question, Stephanie, and maybe the applicant will have to address it, but do you have the ability to put on the screen the elevations of the building? So, if we could see the south elevation, this would be the one facing the freeway?
The docks.
Then docks means a lot of cement trucks.
If tech support can put the PowerPoint presentation back on? Okay, can everybody say now?
Okay, it would be... Yes. Actually, I'm looking for... I guess, I'm looking for the photo simulation, the one that's...
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, there it is. Thank you. Okay, so, what is the... Do you know, maybe the applicant, if you know what the applicant does, what is the height of the building on that section where it says tenant signage, from the top of that down to the... And if you don't know, that's okay. We'll ask the applicant when they speak.
I don't know that off the top of my head, and I don't want to move the screen, so...
Yeah, that's okay.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Right, if there are no other questions for staff, I want to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, so let's go ahead and bring up the applicant for 12 minutes. That would be great.
Good evening. Chair Wolpert, members of the commission, I'm Craig Furness, President of Seventh Street Development. I live in Santa Ana, California, and we're the manager of the applicant, 7474 BPLLC. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'd like to first introduce my company, tell you a little bit about us, and then, some of the members of my team are here tonight. Seventh Street Development is a family-owned and family-operated industrial development company that was founded in 2003. For the over 21 years, we've been focused on ground-up industrial developments of the highest quality here in Southern California, like the one before you tonight. We typically own our projects, different from maybe others. We hold them long-term, and we manage them ourselves. We hope to be long-term members of your community as a result of this development. We're excited to have the chance to work with you and the city of Westminster. It's been a really good opportunity and a favorable experience so far. We have several members of our team here tonight. As I mentioned, Seventh Street is a family-owned and operated company. My son, Scott Furness, is here. He oversees our asset management. Additionally, we have our project architect, Bridget Herdman, who is a founder and principal of Herdman Architecture and Design. Bridget has brought two members of her team, Jacob Layere and Tyler Larson. We also have Frank Reynolds. He's our environmental consultant from the Reynolds Group. Frank was a part of the team that did the original environmental site assessment for the project. Finally, we have Brandon Gilligan, our environmental attorney, with Shook, Hardy, and Bacon. So, I want to express my appreciation for Stephanie Tomiano's presentation and her professionalism and the thorough work that she and her staff have done. The city has done a great job in conducting the development review. We're grateful for that work, and we're here to answer any questions you might have, or those that might arise in this hearing. Specifically, Stephanie mentioned, sent us, made us aware of a comment letter, a late communication letter received from a law firm, LaZoo Drury, that my team would like to address that in our comments. I would like to introduce, if possible, Brandon Gilligan, our environmental counsel, to speak to some of the issues in that letter, if that's acceptable to the commission?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, we're here for questions, and I'd like to reserve a chance to come back at the end, if possible.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Gilligan, and I'm an environmental attorney on behalf of the applicant in this matter. I wanted to reiterate some of the points that have been discussed regarding the comment letter that was received yesterday, and why those points are wrong and the CEQA exemption is proper in this case. One of the points, the first point that was made in the letter, was that the application in the project does not comply with the zoning code. However, that is based on an administrative adjustment to the height that is part of the zoning code, and it is permissible, and therefore, with that administrative adjustment, it still is in compliance with the zoning code. The second point that was made is related to a mitigation measure allegedly, which is actually a condition of approval to screen storage in the rear of the property. There's a difference between mitigation measures, which are to protect and reduce impacts from adverse environmental conditions, and conditions of approval. In this case, the condition of approval is not a mitigation measure. It is not related to an adverse impact to the environment. In fact, as the CEQA analysis has stated, there are no adverse impacts to the environment. Finally, the letter also claims that the property in the project is on the Cortez list, which is not true. I have reviewed the Cortez list, and I can attest to the fact that the property is not on the Cortez list. So, therefore, for these reasons, the comment letter is wrong, and the CEQA exemption still applies.
And what is the Cortez list?
It is a list by the Department of Substance Control that if it's on this list, basically, what the CEQA law says is that you cannot have the CEQA exemption if you're on this list. And this list means that the property had some sort of adverse impact to the environment.
Any other questions for the applicant while you're here? I have a question. I'm not sure, as the environmental guy, you can answer this, but maybe I'll hold until the applicant comes back up.
Yeah. Thank you.
You want to come back up? We still have six minutes left. We can ask you some questions?
We do have Frank Reynolds here, who can speak more definitively to the Cortez list and those implications. And I could answer Commissioner Anderson's question, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
And we do have our architect as well here. The building height at the back of the building is approximately 34 feet, so just below the 35-foot height.
So, what is the overall height there of that section, where it's above tenant storage?
Do we have a... Can we bring up the...
Yeah, you're not seeing the picture there. I guess we haven't seen the picture yet.
If IT could just share what's on the screen again?
If we get real technical, I'm going to bring Bridget up here. So, that dimension in the back, right there, Stephanie, on this section, I believe that's 34 feet.
The dimension is 34 feet, closest to the freeway.
And so, one of the things I'd like to point out, and you rightly showed that elevation from the freeway, the site is elevated above... The freeway is elevated above the site, about 35 feet. So, as you... The yard is naturally screened. I mean, you can't see those doors anyway, right now. And that condition has been in place since 1970, when this operation has been there. So, the current body coat facility has that yard, and now we're going to replace it with a new building that has a similar yard, but the grade of that yard is well below the freeway, so you can't see the yard.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm not concerned about the yard. My concern is the fact that you've done a great job with your roof screening on three elevations, but on the south elevation, if we can go back to that, go back to the south elevation, then, based on your photo-realization exhibit that you've submitted, is your... I guess, the back of your roof screening and some of your roof equipment is going to be just right out there in the open. So, it seems to defeat the purpose of your roof screening. So, is there a way that that roof screening can be raised from the freeway, so that the folks on the freeway are going to just see your roof screening and not the back of the roof screening and your roof equipment?
We'd be open to that, yes. Right now, the 34 feet is to the roof line, and then there's a parapet that extends above that, and we would be open to working with staff to make sure that the parapet level screens out the rest of the roof, so that we can do that. I think I understand your question.
Yes, yes. Right, so, on that...
If we pull up the 3D rendering from the...
Yes.
The 10% variance...
There it is. Thank you, Stephanie.
The 10% variance does not include the parapet. That's just roof height, correct?
That's correct, yes. Any kinds of architectural projections, that is not subject to the same height limit of the zone.
Okay, so it makes it real simple, then. The commission could just put a condition in that the parapet on the south elevation would screen the backs of the parapets and the roof equipment, to that effect?
Yeah, there could be... I mean, and then they may not want their equipment all the way in the back of the building anyways. I don't know. It's going to be dependent upon the grading, so you wouldn't want your water necessarily going towards the equipment. The equipment might be up at the front.
The air conditioning equipment will most likely be all the way on the front side of the building toward Garden Grove Boulevard, where the office improvements are. And there'll be skylights, but we can screen that.
Okay, so it could be then, so it's clear then, it would be screened so that this image on the... That we're seeing right now, it would just... All you'd see is the parapet when it's revised. Okay. And then, another question, too. So, you've... It's a family-owned business. You've been operating for years, and this building is a huge improvement over what's there now. So, do you have regular landscape maintenance within all... For all of your buildings?
Yes, we do. We have weekly maintenance, and we visit a property personally at least twice a month.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. It's more business-related than anything else. Why one tenant? Why not have a multi-tenant site?
We like multi-tenant buildings. In fact, we operate some of them now. The way the site lays out, in terms of just the access and the parking lot, it doesn't divide well. If it was wider, we would have probably had two tenants.
I mean, you're talking almost 70,000-square-foot building, correct? 69,000 square feet?
Yes. In industrial terms, this is a small building, relative to other projects that you've seen. This building, you know, it is being built without a pre-commitment from a tenant or a buyer, so this is a big investment or risk that we're willing to take, because the building's flexible. And also, we know that those types of smaller companies don't pre-commit. They don't plan ahead that much.
Right. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're a fully construction company. You do the whole construction... You're a company yourself, right? You don't subcontract to nobody else?
No, we...
The job would not be subcontracted.
We hire general contractors.
You do that, okay.
And they hire subcontractors.
Okay. You plan on hiring anybody from Westminster?
We have not hired anyone, but I hope so.
You know, we need to create more jobs in the city here, if you...
Absolutely.
You know, we would love it if you would hire somebody from here.
Which unfortunately has nothing to do with land use, but...
We're trying to get some business here, okay?
Any other questions for the applicant that are relative to land use?
I just wanted a clarification. You are the developer. Are you the owner?
We are the developer and the owner and the manager.
And the manager. Developer, owner, manager.
There's some companies that come and they merchant-build and buy, build and sell. We actually... We have private equity, so we own the property. We will fund the construction, and then, our hope is to hold it long-term, lease it and hold it long-term.
That was my next question, was the intention to hold it long-term and owner occupy it or owner-run it, not occupy it. Obviously, you're going to rent it out to a tenant.
Correct.
And then, based off of your other buildings that you've done that are similar to this, what types of tenants could we expect?
That's a good question. We do have buildings. They're... These buildings are primary for distribution and warehouse use. There might be some light assembly in there, light industrial. So, you might see folks that do shoes, apparel, food and beverage, aerospace, automotive. Harbinger Motors is right down the street. You know, it'd be great to do something with them, or somebody that supplies them. So, you'll see a variety of different buildings and different tenants, because the building is designed to be flexible. That's why that 32-foot interior clear height is so important. It'll have state-of-the-art sprinkler system. You'll be state-of-the-art efficiencies in terms of energy and other things.
But it's going to be office in the front, distribute... Warehouse in the back. There's not going to... You don't have... It's not going to be retail in the front. It's not going to be retail in the front, right?
No. You know, the only possibility would be like a furniture store that may have, you know, some storage and maybe some retail. That C-M zone allows those kind of uses.
So that is a possibility, then?
It's a possibility.
Okay.
So basically, 10 docks means semi-trucks coming in and out. That basically, 10 docks means semi-trucks coming in and out, unloading and loading, right?
Yeah.
Yes. There'll be semi-trucks loading at the dock. There'll be a secure area in the back. 70-car parking spaces.
I have a question regarding the picture that you just showed. I did not see the screen around the equipment on roof unit. Will you have it to comply to the code? Screen around equipment on roof?
Yes, sir. And, you know, there's obviously, from the front of the building, Garden Grove Boulevard will have a parapet structure screening all the air conditioning. And then, to Commissioner Anderson's point, we're open to raising that parapet to screen from the freeway, because it's a different angle, a different view angle, which you correctly pointed out.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. I think the 12 minutes is up, and we've asked enough questions, so I want to thank you for your time. Do we have any more speakers sign up?
We have Chase Prisciano speaking in opposition.
Good evening, Chair Wolpert and Honorable Commissioners. My name is Chase Prisciano, speaking on behalf of the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility or SAFER regarding a project known as Development Review and Administrative Adjustment Case Number 2024-0277, which proposes the demolition of eight existing industrial buildings at 7474 Garden Grove Boulevard and the construction of a new 70,000-square-foot warehouse. The city is proposed to exempt the project entirely from all review under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA pursuant to the CEQA info exemption. As discussed in our written comments, the CEQA exemption is improper, and CEQA review is required to analyze and mitigate the project's impacts. First, the CEQA info exemption only applies if the project is consistent with the applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies, as well as with applicable zoning designation and regulations. The project exceeds the 35-foot height limit set forth in the general plan and zoning. Therefore, the exemption does not apply. Second, a project that requires mitigation measures cannot be exempted from CEQA. Here, the staff report recommends mitigation measures to reduce the project's aesthetic impacts. Therefore, the exemption does not apply. Third, a project may not be exempted from CEQA review if it is located on a contaminated site. If the project is located on the state's Cortez list of contaminated sites, then it may not be exempted from CEQA review. The CEQA analysis admits that the project site is on the Cortez list. CEQA analysis, page 12. The analysis attempts to dismiss this fact by stating that no further action is required. However, this is irrelevant. If the project site is on the Cortez list, then the proposed project may not be exempted from CEQA review. This is because existing site contamination may be disturbed or released during construction activities such as excavation and soil disturbance. Since there is no dispute that the project site is on the Cortez list, it may not be exempted from CEQA review. For these reasons, we ask the city to decline to approve the project until CEQA review is conducted to analyze and mitigate the project's impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
That was the last one.
That was the last one. Okay. I would like to go ahead and close the public hearing, then.
One second. May I be back right?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
And I do have experts here. They can speak if needed. Again, I'm Craig Furness.
Sure. We'll grant you another three minutes for any rebuttal.
Can we pull up the Cortez list? So I want to speak to that. I know Stephanie made the points and Brandon made the points, but I want to make sure you understand. And I have Frank Reynolds here again, our environmental consultant. But we sorted it by city, and I'm happy to tell you that in Westminster, there are no sites on the Cortez list. And again, Stephanie spoke to the other two points, as did Brandon, but all reiterate, you know, that 10% administrative adjustment, you know, we're below on some areas, a little bit above, but that's for the roof drainage. And that is written in your code, that 10% adjustment. So we totally have worked hard to stay within the confines of the zoning ordinance and the code. And then, secondly, that yard requirement relates to a conditional approval. It's not a mitigation measure. And that measure, that condition of approval, we had no issue with, because the visibility of that is not... The yard is not visible, anyway, from the freeway. But even if it was, it's been in that condition since 1970. It's not a significant environmental impact. And you can see the doors of the public storage next door, the yard of that, as well as the U-Haul on the other side. So these are not significant environmental impacts. And so I just wanted to speak to that. We're excited about the project. It's going to bring buildings that are old and outdated and bring you a new, state-of-the-art industrial building. It'll bring jobs. It'll double the property tax revenue, and we hope you'll approve this project tonight. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing on item 8.2. Commissioners, any comments, feedback, any more questions for staff that you would have?
Just that when we get to the point of a motion in a second that we include a condition that the south parapet and/or roof screening, whatever we want to call it, would be raised to... So that the equipment and the back of the other roof screening would not be visible from the freeway. And staff's welcome to finalize that or make that sound better.
I agree with that. And then, I would just comment that thank you, Stephanie, for addressing the late communication for us, so that all of these items were addressed. I'm satisfied with them. If... I'd be happy to make a motion to approve with the condition that Don, Vice Chair, was just discussing.
I second that.
Because I agree with that. I think that, you know, raising that parapet to hide the backside of the parapet and the screen the equipment from the freeway side is a good idea.
I had one quick question. Do we know where the city boundary is or the city boundary between Garden Grove and Westminster is, according to the site?
It's across the street.
I know Garden Grove is across the street of Garden Grove Boulevard, but...
Yeah. I believe it's along the center line, if my memory serves me correctly.
Is it all the way down to Beach Boulevard?
Ooh.
Like Beach and Garden Grove, and that's a city designation? Or is there a part Garden Grove to the east of the property?
There's Stanton, too. Don't forget. Stanton, Stanton. Beach and Garden Grove is Stanton.
Stanton, get to that point?
I'm just curious, because everything on that side of the street seems to be called Garden Grove something, but I didn't, you know... To be honest with you, it's... Most people don't know that there's a lot of Westminster property over there.
Stanton comes through Boulevard? Really?
Yeah.
I know that.
It goes up to Western.
Oh. That's weird. That's weird shape of cities.
It is. It's the golden triangle of the 22.
Cut it in the center, and that's it done.
Unfortunately, I can't answer your specific question. I'm looking at the plans right now, and it shows that the limitations do appear to be along generally the street center line, but I don't have the precise location of where the city boundaries are. Unfortunately, I'm not able to access our city GIS system and...
Just curious.
Okay, well, I second it.
So is there a specific part on the resolution, Don? You want to fit the parapet stuff in? Or Stephanie, can you recommend where we would add the amended language to have more roof visibility coverage for equipment?
Yeah. Staff would recommend including it prior to the issuance of building permits. So we would work with the applicant to revise the elevations, any architectural sheets, really demonstrating where... What the increase in the parapet would look like, as well as the placement of the parapet would be. Because we'll want to look at both, raising the height, as well as just the placement of it, to ensure that it is, you know, substantially screening the mechanical rooftop equipment specifically from that view. And then, we would ensure that all of that is looked at. And one of the things I would also ensure that staff looks into, and we would incorporate this into the draft condition of approval, but making sure that those additional screening elements really are visually and architecturally integrated into the design of the building. Because I've seen that in some instances, where they just tack on a roof parapet, and it just looks not integrated whatsoever into the design. So we'll, you know, we do have a unique opportunity with an existing building, a great architect and designer, to be able to incorporate those changes, to make sure that we are preserving just the high-quality architectural design of the project itself.
Where do you want to put that in the resolution? Is that a pertinent question?
Well, we could let staff, I think, put that in, which I think would work. And also, Stephanie, I just want to make sure that we're screening the roof equipment and also the back of the parapet on the other elevations, too.
Okay.
Because if you look at the... If you look at that particular exhibit, you'll see you're looking at the back of the elevations, for example, of the west parapet and the north parapet. So just language to that effect, you'd be roof equipment and the back of the other parapets.
Roof aesthetics.
Yeah.
So I believe we have a motion by Commissioner Rose, seconded by Commissioner Hamadi, to approve the resolution with an item added by staff under... Prior to issuance of grading or building permit, to include the details of the roof and the parapet on the south and the internal roof screening for any equipment.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rose, seconded by Commissioner Hamadi, to adopt Resolution Number 25-002, entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, Approving Case Number 2024-0277 for Development Review to Construct a New Approximately 69,498-Square-Foot Industrial Warehouse Building Within the C-M Zoning District and an Administrative Adjustment to Allow a Building Height Increase of Up to 10% Above the 30-Foot Height Limit Located at 7474 Garden Grove Boulevard, APN 096-021-14." I will roll call vote. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Wolpert?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
The commission's action on this item shall become effective 15 days after the decision date identified in the notice of decision. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal on the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned 15-day period.
All right. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number 9, which is any regular business. Anything to report from staff? I don't think so. Correct? Go ahead.
I do have an item to report.
Oh, fantastic.
So we... Our next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on March 19th will, in fact, be held. We do have one public hearing item. It is a development application proposed at the Westminster Mall site. So it will be the first development application moving forward to a public hearing. So in anticipation of that, the applicant, which would be True Life Homes, they are leading their own community meeting prior to that Planning Commission hearing. Let me just grab the information. I will forward it over to the Planning Commission if there are any commissioners interested in attending this meeting led by the applicant itself. So just want to make that very clear, that this is an applicant-led community meeting, just to be able to solicit any public questions or input regarding their project ahead of the public hearing. So that is taking place on March 12th. They are hosting their meeting in the Miriam Warna Community Room. So that's at the council... Sorry, the Chamber of Commerce building. And that will be March 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I will forward over information on that applicant-led community meeting to the commissioners.
Thank you.
Isn't that the same time as the city council meeting? Are they aware of that? Do they want to adjust?
They are aware of that, yes.
Are they doing that on purpose?
We... Staff advised them to look at other dates, but unfortunately, due to the availability of facilities, that's what they selected.
Any other matters from staff, either under item 10 or 11?
No additional items to report.
Awesome. Item number 12, matters from the Planning Commission, including AB 1234, reports when required. Commissioners, anything?
Comments?
Comments, yeah. You thinking about it? Go ahead.
Well, just in case I'm not a commissioner at the next one, because I haven't been reappointed yet, I just wanted to say to the public and to the commissioners here that I've enjoyed my time. I hope that I get reappointed, and we will see. But it has been a pleasure to serve.
Thank you.
I would like to just say congratulations to both applicants tonight. It's so encouraging to see great development, great businesses coming into the city. I definitely can't wait to see a beautiful, brand-new industrial building in the city of Westminster, should that move forward. And I just hope that the applicant can find other areas of Westminster that have old buildings that need renovation, and would like to spend their money here and create new, wonderful, beautiful landscaped quality projects. That's what we are here for. And also, Commissioner Rose, thank you very much. We hope to definitely see you next time, if we all are back here. It's been a pleasure having you on the commission. I know you replaced Jameson Power, who left us and moved his family to that terrible city of Fountain Valley. Just kidding. It's a nice place to live. That's what their motto says. But it's been a pleasure having you on the commission, as well as all the other commissioners here. So I believe that hopefully the city council will have their full roster by the next meeting, but we're not sure. So we hope everybody can make that March 19th meeting. And if you're inclined, as Stephanie said, March 12th at the Chamber of Commerce, I believe is on Hazard and Beach, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for that applicant-driven community meeting for some projects, potential projects at the mall development. Any other commissioners have anything to say?
Stephanie, send us an email reminder of that meeting, like one day before, if you can. Okay? And then, it was nice working with you, Laura, and I hope you get reappointed again. I really do. I like the team. They're a very nice team. We work together. That's awesome. We get things done. And I hope that after that building is completely finished, more others to follow. Hopefully, more business owners see how beautiful the building is, and they spend the money to get improvement.
I would like to ask about the status of the projects that the city has, and does it have a big, a long backlog? And in that case, can we facilitate or speed it up so that people can come to our city and do business after long waiting for that project? Yeah.
Well, one thing that I didn't get to mention with regard to the application at 7474 Garden Grove Boulevard was that application was actually just submitted on November 15th. And we went through three rounds of revisions on the plans, and we worked very diligently with the applicant to try to address, you know, all of those outstanding comments from the city and to get it to hearing in about three and a half months. So I will say that we are making, you know, very, very significant efforts to try to move things along as expeditiously as possible. There's not a huge backlog that I personally am aware of, that is within staff's control in terms of processing. But we are kind of working through that overall backlog, or not that backlog, but just any applications that might have an... that backlog, but just any applications that might have an older application year on it, to try to reach out proactively to applicants, kind of figure out what's going on, and if there's anything that we as staff can do to try to help facilitate, you know, finding some progress on those projects. So as far as just review timelines, we don't have a backlog, we are very responsive in terms of, you know, making sure that we are hitting our 30-day reviews and providing comments to applicants, but a lot of times what happens is that we provide them those comments, and then we're just in a waiting mode. We are, you know, essentially, the ball is in the applicant's court, and we're just waiting to hear back from them, as far as when, you know, they're ready to revise and resubmit, but that is definitely something that the Planning Division is striving to do, is to, you know, be a little more proactive, and trying to find out where some of those hurdles are, and if there's anything staff can do to try to, you know, shake things loose, and hopefully get the application back on track.
Thank you.
I, I think to that comment, that, that is a testament to also the, the owner and developer being professional, and this is not their first project, these are definitely the kind of partners that we want coming in to the city of Westminster and developing, and, you know, one of the things that residents commonly will misunderstand is when you're driving around and you see a dilapidated building, that, you know, the city somehow is able to, to, you know, just wave a magic wand and make it new, and we can't do that. So we have to have people that are willing to invest in the city of Westminster, and so it's great, I agree with Casey, with the chair, what he said, that it's nice to see people coming in and developing Westminster, and I look forward to seeing that new project when it's built, hopefully expeditiously.
All right, anything else? Well, if there's nothing else, I'd like to move on to item number 13, your favorite item, and that's adjournment. So we would like to adjourn the meeting here at 7:47 p.m. Our next regular meeting, as already stated, is on March 19th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you very much, we look forward to seeing you then.